I don't want to see him when I walk that one. How the heck are you, man? You doing all right already?
Yeah.
That's better than the bottle.
Not much worse than I.
Yeah.
I think we've got a haircut. We're doing things around here that you're supposed to be working.
Matthew, Matt, Travis.
Willis said he's not coming today.
You know what that means? Lost his walker. Wow, where is it?
Feels great.
Michael?
Eight seventy-one, one sixty-five.
Where's Wendy? She's the one that always turns it up to a hundred and fifty degrees. It's seventy-one up here. Turn this baby down or I'm not going to make it. Did you turn on heat?
I turned it off.
Or am I having menopause, one of the two?
All right, it's December second, twenty twenty-five. This is the meeting at three o'clock of the Uena County Board of Commissioners. We have Mike Wilkins with the prayer and Sherri Allen with the pledge.
Our dear heavenly fathers, we come before thee this afternoon as a public body. We ask that thou bless these commissioners to make wise decisions. We ask that thou bless our community to continue to prosper. We ask that thou bless our lands with the moisture that we're in need of. We thank thee for what thou has blessed us with and ask that thou continue to bless us that way. Father, we ask that thou bless our armed forces and public safety and first responders, that they might be able to be safe and protected in all they do for us. And we say these things now in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Sherri, appreciate it. Change to our setup here. Number four, we had some issues with the way it was written down. So that will be tabled until next week. I assume, next week. Huh? Oh, it's got to go out for a complete rebid. So I guess it won't be tabled for a while. Okay, first order of business will be the approval of the minutes. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes. Let's see, does it give it, just, there you go. Which minutes do you have, Sherri?
Yeah, it's none on the list here, so it's on November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the warrants, Mr. Wilkins.
Commissioners, I have warrants from November twenty-sixth in the amount of one million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-six cents. There are several annual payments in this one. One to Caterpillar Lease for the road department equipment and a contract to SIFCO for chip sealing for sixty thousand and two snowmobiles for the, from Ridgeline Sports to the sheriff's department for twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty and an annual payment to Tri-County Health Department for five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents. And then also there is the monthly contracts and the health insurance is through there.
Just the one, Mike?
Yes, the one.
Okay, any questions concerned?
I've had a lot of discussion over this one, but it is what it is.
Okay, I'll call for a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, tax matters today.
Okay, commissioners, I have two. The first one is a request from U-Bag. They have purchased serial number zero five, zero four seven, zero zero six zero for their BTA buses. They purchased it November third, twenty twenty-five. The title company has paid their share of the owner prior to them purchasing it. So we, their request an abatement of two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. That is the balance that is due for the year on that property.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns on that? If not, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, that we accept the tax matters, approve the tax matters as presented by Clerk Auditor Mike Wilkins.
Okay, my next one is.
Do we have to vote?
Let's have a vote.
Oh, sorry.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Mike.
The next one is a request for refund from Mid-America Pipeline. This appeal is a twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-five. Appeal number eighteen dash thirteen twenty-two. This affects three property serial numbers. Serial numbers are fifty, zero, one, zero, twelve oh three, fifty, zero, five, zero. I've gotten wrong. I get my glasses on this one. I missed one number on that one. Fifty, twelve oh three, and ten, twelve oh three, and fifty, two forty-eight, twenty-eight, eighty-four. Altogether, commissioners, this is a refund of one million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-three cents. That is the taxes. This will also include interest of approximately a hundred and ninety-eight thousand plus or minus that will be figured and computed at the time that is actually written.
This is for years, which, what did you say?
Twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-five. I can give you the amount for each year if you want.
No, it's just, it's ridiculous.
This one is a centrally assessed property that we have been fighting, they've been fighting since twenty eighteen. They took it to court. They went, won twenty fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Those years have already been taken care of and this has been dragging out since twenty eighteen.
Would you quickly explain to the public what happened and how that tax is calculated?
Okay, centrally assessed property is assessed by the State Tax Commission, State Property Tax Division. The original value they give us on, I'm just going to use twenty eighteen. Our share of their original value is eighty-eight million, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, nine seventy. The company appealed this particular one. They want to, I don't know how far I can go on this, Lauren. They want to be valued as a utility company as like Enbridge and Utah Power, where they think that because the value of the gas going through their lines.
So did I hear you right? You said that's the value they give us, like self-assessed?
Correct, self-assessed. This is the value that was reported to the state. The state puts it on for that and then they appealed the values. And for those, for the seven years that these appeals have, that is the amount of tax that was collected on behalf of all the taxing entities. Uena County's share of that tax is three hundred and sixty-two thousand, thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. Uena School District's share of that tax is eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, twenty dollars and forty-nine cents.
So we have no repercussion?
The only repercussion we have on this is to do a judgment levy. And where they are one of our largest taxpayers, they will pay part of the tax back to themselves.
And so if we don't approve this in a vote, then they what, sue us?
They would sue us and it's already been sent. This property also includes Grand County.
Duchesne.
Duchesne County, Daggett, and a portion of Summit, if I remember right. And there's five counties involved in this appeal. And we've been fighting it for years. They actually were after more than that in their refund. This was more or less a settlement agreement that came through on this amount.
So the state just keeps saying yes? All right, any further discussion?
It is important to note that these are tax monies that were already budgeted.
Oh, yeah, these monies have been budgeted and spent.
And then we have to refund these to this taxing and, to this entity.
To this taxpayer.
Clear back to eighteen, twenty eighteen?
Correct.
Yes, this is not the first nor the last, I'm sure.
No.
And we have been aware of this and we are working with our legislators and the State Tax Commission to try to remedy this problem.
And we've been fighting this since twenty eighteen. But we have finally received what is referred to as the final order of approval from the State Tax Commission. And the only, our only recourse from there is to go to district court with it. And the other five counties, along with us, have decided it's just easier to do this, to settle it and be done with it. Grand County was the largest county in this participation. We are the second largest county affected by this appeal.
I believe he told us it was around two or two and a half million in Grand County.
In Grand County.
Okay, go for a motion.
I don't want to make it. I'll give it back. I'll make a motion that we accept the agreement. This agreement with Springbuck Incorporated?
No.
No.
Mid-America Pipeline.
Tax matter.
Which one are we on?
Number three.
Oh, three, okay, we're on tax matters. I'm, okay, I just didn't have it wrote out there. I make a motion that we accept this, what do you call it, rebate or re?
Refund.
Refund as, Mid-America Pipeline as presented by Mike Wilkins.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
Aye. Sorry, did you say aye?
I said aye. I'm sorry, reluctantly.
Thank you.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay. As soft as they could and still saying yes.
Mike? Mike, you've changed. You must have a tax matter. Which guy?
I have, I also have a tax matter. Danette Brooks, Shuruni County Assessor. The county assessor requests your approval for a refund of taxes for the twenty twenty-three tax year in the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents. This refund involves multiple accounts and tax districts. And I have attached all the details on here. The total refund amount will be paid to the property owner of record of Strata Networks. The reason for the refund is the business owner was audited by MCAT and the audit revealed that certain assets were incorrectly entered into the classification tables. After moving the assets to the correct tables, a refund was generated for this amount. And also telecom business personal property is also self-reporting. So this was self-reported to MCAT and then they audited and found the errors in the classification tables. And so at a county level, the only thing that we do on telecom is collect the payments that MCAT bills them.
Would you tell people, the public, what MCAT stands for?
MCAT is a multi-county appraisal trust fund. That's it.
Which is run by the state. And this is for what year? We haven't heard anything on twenty-four yet, huh?
What?
We haven't heard anything on twenty-four yet? Or did they get it right, twenty-four?
They didn't do twenty-four. Just twenty-three.
Okay, good.
And I know that there was, I believe, something passed on centrally assessed now that they can only appeal back, is it three years? Is that as far back as they can appeal now on the centrally assessed?
I think they said something like that out there.
Yeah, but I don't know, is there anything on these?
This wasn't an appeal. This was an audit.
Right, so it was just, but I was just thinking of the centrally assessed. But as far as this goes, an audit, how far back can that go, do you know?
Three.
It can only go three years as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, call for a motion.
I'd make a motion that we refund Strata Networks or the owner of record for Strata Networks, forty-three thousand, four seventy-five, eighty-one for the year twenty twenty-three as presented.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Now make your motion, Willis, for the next one. Do you want me to explain it to you? This next one is with Tribute Insurance. They are a, they're part of our self-insurance. They receive analytic, analytical data from us and our processor of claims and make recommendations back. But in order for them to receive the information from our claims processor, we have to have this agreement intact. We had it last year and this is for the twenty-sixth year. Has been reviewed by the attorney's office. And I have a spot to sign electronically, which I will forward to Commissioner Larson if it's approved.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns?
I think it was just important to note that this does not cost us anything.
That was, this isn't a cost to us. It's actually a savings to us as they do their analytics on our claims.
Thank you. If you're ready for a motion, I would make the motion to accept the con, the agreement with Springbuck, Inc. for the, to provide the analytic information as presented.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Chair?
Yes.
If I may ask a question. Item number four, was that removed?
Yes, we got rid of it before you got in.
Perfect, thank you.
So we'll move on to number five. Considerate.
Just for clarification on that, that was completely done away with. We're going to rebid the whole thing, correct?
Correct.
Rebid it.
Number four?
Yes.
Okay, consideration for acceptance of agreement with, oh, sorry, we just did Springbuck. Acceptance of right-of-way grant. Utah one oh six, seven, one, eight, seven, two, one, from the BLM. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Matt Kizir with Community Development. We've received a right-of-way grant from BLM. This is for the parking area for access to the county's Ashley Springs property or Ashley Gorge property. I do have a map here just to kind of show where it's at for those that aren't familiar with it. So this is the county, this is where the county property starts up, Ashley Gorge. This is Ashley Valley Water Treatment Plant here. And the parking area is right in this area and I'll zoom in a little closer now. Kind of got your bearings. The grant is for one and a half acres. And it's approximately a half acre of parking along the Ashley Springs Road. It'll be ninety-degree parking and it'll go to approximately this area here. And then there'll be kind of an improved turnaround up here so that people aren't pulling onto the Ashley Water District property there, so. So there'd be approximately a half acre along the road and then an acre that's back in this area. So if you've been up there, you've got the dead trees that were burned and then the green trees. We're going to be on the south side of the green trees. So it'll be about approximately an acre in this area here. We'll start out with a half acre and then as needed, we would develop the other half acre. So that's where this grant is. And we do have two copies here that the BLM sent us that will need signature on them. And then we'll also need a signature from Jerry Kenska over at BLM as well. So we need the chair and Jerry Kenska. And I think it's just one. Let me make sure here. Yeah, it's just one notary public, so, for both of the signatures.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I would make that motion that we accept the right-of-way grant, UT, UT one zero six, seven, one, eight, seven, two, one, from the BLM as presented.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And then if I could, I'd just like to thank the BLM. They, they worked quickly on this one and got it approved for us. So we appreciate their cooperation with that.
Okay, Deanna, you're on. That's why I didn't turn the lights up. I knew we were going to TV again.
Okay, Deanna Nyberg with Community Development. And we have a request for a rezone from Jolly Orthodontics on property owned by Raymond and Heather Peace located at two sixty-seven North, twenty-five hundred West, serial number zero four, one, two, six, zero, zero, four, four. The request is to rezon a portion of this property, a one-acre portion on the northeast corner of the property along Aggie Boulevard. And the Jolly Orthodontics is planning on buying that property. They want to rezon it from RA one to C one so that they can build an orthodontic office. This application was reviewed at a county commission work session on October twenty-second. And the commission asked us to, at the time of the application, the owner hadn't signed the application. So we were asked to make sure that that was done beforehand and we did get that approval from the owner. So everything is good there. They're on board. Planning Commission reviewed this at a public hearing on October fifteenth and they approved it unanimously, they recommended approval of the rezon unanimously. There was one public comment, one comment from the property owner to the north here. Just kind of, he's concerned about the access. They have a shared access right now. He was concerned that the access wouldn't be good enough for a commercial. And talking to Jared Kaufman with the road department, he said that that access is sufficient, but the applicant is considering putting in a different access anyways. So they said that's not, they're not concerned about that, but, let's see. Currently, it's zoned RA one. Future land use shows this area, it's considered institutional, which means anything that has to do with higher education or any uses that can help promote that or that will be needed for that use are a good use for this area. Planning Commission determined that C one would be a good use for that area. And that is all I have.
But they're not going to bother the tulips?
It's not going to bother the tulips. Nope, that's to the north.
All right, I'll call for a motion.
I'm making a motion that we grant the rezon of property RA, oh, no, that's, has it got a property number there? From RA one to C one as presented. Oh, the serial number of the property is, is zero four, one, two, six, zero, zero, four, four.
Any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. All right. It's daylight again. Ordinance number ten, twenty-nine, two oh two, five oh one, policy for lock gates. Scott?
Scott Hardman, County Road Department. Commissioners, I have a lock gate ordinance to present to you today for your approval. This has been presented in the work session. I won't read, read it all, give you some brief summaries on it. It's about four pages long, so I won't bore everybody with it. Basically, we run off, we ran off of the state code seventy-two, seven, one, zero, five, and seventy-two, seven, one, zero, six, stating that you can't put a locked gate on a county road or right-of-way. So this ordinance just puts these same measures from the state codes into our ordinance, so. That's basically what it is.
Do I have any questions, comments, or concerns on this?
No, I would make the motion that we approve ordinance number ten, dash, twenty-nine, dash, twenty, twenty-five, oh, one, as presented.
I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And Lauren has gone through this with us and I appreciate all of your help with that.
And just to be clear, it requires, it talks about permitting, enforcement, and requirements for county D roads where these are placed. So we've been through it. We have met numerous times. I'm pleased with it.
All right, resolution eleven, twenty-six, twenty-five, R. Two, amendments to the Uena County General Plan.
R. One.
Make it R. One, I'll go up one. It's still amendments, but it's the economic development section, Travis.
Good afternoon, commissioners. And I just want to say thanks to Scott for not boring us and going quick. Thanks, Scott. Slide this over. Okay, so Travis Campbell with the Economic Development Office. And I'm here to request approval for updates to the Economic Development Section of the county's general plan. We discussed this at the last work session, so I'm not sure if you want me to go through all the details on this. There's, there's quite a bit here and I'm happy to go through each, each point. But the idea here was, was to provide this update. We had an Economic Development Section for the plan. It wasn't bad, it just needed to be updated and, and give us a little more direction. And so that's what the intent here was, was to do, was to update these, these, these facts and, and these figures on housing, employment, income, things like that, that need to be updated. And then more importantly, to, to really update a lot of the language in, in this action plan section here on, on what our focus is, what our, what our direction is for economic development purposes for, for Uena County and really spelling that out and creating this, this strategic plan on, on what our efforts are and what our outlook should be for, for the coming years, for the five, ten, fifteen years. So it's something I mentioned during the work session that this, this document shouldn't be looked at as, as, as the final version of our efforts. This should be looked at as somewhat of a living document that is changeable and can be adapted with, with the, you know, the way the world moves and developments as we make progress, as things outside of our control happen. We can make changes to this and, and use it to. Um, we can make changes to this and, and use it to, to guide us, but also to, to be able to look back and know what, what we've done, how we did it, why we did it, the way we did, um, whatever those efforts may be. So, um, again, there's, there's the five kind of main points here. Um, economic diversification, workforce development, infrastructure improvements. Um, sorry, I'm trying to get down there. I can't really see that far away, though. Um, support for small businesses, and then just regional coordination. So, those are the five main bullet points, different strategies and, and ways to, uh, approach each of those, those items. So, um, with that, I, again, I can go through each of these one by one, if you want to talk more in detail, if you have questions on any of these, uh, that we didn't discuss during the work session. But with that, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Chair?
Answering questions?
If I may.
You may.
Say something. Um, I just wanted to let everyone know that, uh, Travis works really hard to keep all of our economic development vibrant and alive, and works in the community to help any individuals that need it. Um, I really appreciate all of his efforts, especially to update the general plan and to put, and to update this, especially the graphs and things. The visuals make it a little easier to understand. And unless there's something else, I would make a motion to approve Resolution eleven dash twenty-six dash twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-five, R one, as presented.
Any questions, concerns, or comments? Okay. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. Matt?
Thank you.
You're on again.
All right. Matt Kazir again with Community Development. Got Resolution eleven dash twenty-six dash twenty-two, twenty-five, R two. Again, this is an amendment to the general plan, um, adding a water use and preservation element to that plan. Um, this is, this was required by the state of Utah to do this. We did have a couple of changes from what was shown at the work session, uh, due to the, when the state reviewed it, they told us a couple of things that we needed to put in there, so I just wanted to go over those quickly. I don't know. It doesn't really change anything that was in there. Just what, the wording on most of it wasn't exactly what they were looking for. Um, and so, right here in Policy one point, one point three, um, we added coordinate with districts and cities uh, to develop a plan to protect the water delivery systems and public health. We already had everything in there to be coordinated with the different water districts, which include the cities, but, they wanted something in there about the delivery systems and the public health, so. Um, we added that in, uh, to cover that. Uh, the other one that we had to add was, uh, goal number seven here. And then the policies and objectives that follow. Um, support and promote efficient irrigation practices in order to meet regional water conservation goals. When we were first working with the state, um, they kind of told us that this was more of a culinary deal. Uh, but then when they reviewed it, they wanted some, um, information in there about irrigation practices and how, what the county was going to do to help with those. And again, just like the culinary water, the county doesn't have hardly any control over irrigation, um, at all. Only the irrigation shares that, that the county owns would we have any kind of control over. And so, um, a lot of this is just working with the, the irrigators, um, helping them, supporting them as they do things that, to, that help to make their irrigation practices more efficient. And so, um, that's what we have in there, is to work with them, to support, promote, and help. And as they do those things, you know, for example, converting, you know, finding ways to help them convert from flood irrigation to sprinkler systems. There might not be a lot the county can do other than support or, or maybe go promote it to, uh, different places that give grants and things for changing those things over. So, that's what's in here, is that we'll support those different, uh, efforts that are being made to help conserve water on the, uh, irrigation side of things. And then the other thing we had to add was this number five. Uh, we had to list the properties that were under, um, agricultural protection areas. And so, these are the different parcels here within the county that, um, have been approved for agricultural protection. And most of these are for, um, to protect grazing and hay production. Uh, I think there was only two other ones. I think one was a small orchard, and the other one was just a, it said something about just a general field, but I guess that'd be grazing in there, so, or some kind of production, but. So, those were the things that have been added. Uh, it doesn't change the intent or, um, anything with this, part of our general plan. Uh, it just bolstered it maybe a little bit and got it to where it meets the state standard. Which is important to comply with the law, but it also is important because, uh, they don't, they won't give us the grant unless it complies, so. But we're grateful for them looking it over and making sure that it complies before we got it, uh, all the way through the finish line.
Okay. Questions, comments, or concerns on this?
No.
Okay, I'll call for a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to Resolution eleven dash twenty-six dash two zero, two five, R two, as presented. Okay. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have anyone who would like to make a public comment today? Going once? Going twice? Breaker?
We adjourn.
We are adjourned.